Yes.
All right, we are now live.
So I have a question, if one of us gets dropped, can we just redial or just re-link from the link you sent us? But you have to unmute.
Sue, this is Brian Lintone, yeah, that's all you'd have to do, yeah, is just rejoin through the same link, yeah.
Okay.
Welcome everybody to the Board of Education meeting will be getting underway in three minutes. If you have public comments you would like to make, if you're a participant or an attendee of this meeting, you can at the bottom of your screen, click on the Q and A button, enter your name, your address, and your topic, and we will make sure that you get a response after the board meeting. Again, we will be taking public comments from the audience. If you enter your name, address, and topic in the Q and A portion. Participants who are presenting tonight do not need to do that. We have one minute before the Board of Education will start its meeting. Again, if you're joining as an attendee, an audience member, you are free to make a public comment during the public comment section by clicking on the bottom under Q and A. If you enter your name, your address, and your topic, we will make sure that you are able to make your public comments at the appropriate portion of the meeting. Madam President, by my clock, it is now seven o'clock, so I'll make the public comments one more announcement, the announcement one more time before you call us to order, if that's okay. For those attending the board meeting electronically tonight, if you are an audience member, you can click on the Q and A button on this Zoom meeting, enter your name, address, and topic, and you will be called upon during the public comment section.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Board of U46 Board Meeting for April 6, 2020, roll call please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Here.
Ms. Nolan? Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mrs. Porter? Mrs. Porter? I know I saw Ms. Porter. She is present, correct?
She was on earlier, but I don't see her now.
Okay. Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Thomas? Madam President?
Here.
I believe, forum.
Okay. We will, well, we can't see. Tony has put a minute to play on the screen, so if people could state the pledges.
Did Ms. Thomas show up?
No, I'm here, I just, I unmuted incorrectly and it didn't work, I've been here for a couple minutes.
Okay. What about Ms. Nolan?
She just messaged me that she wouldn't be able to make it.
Okay, and Ms. Porter just maybe stepped out momentarily?
Yeah, I'll message her after we do the pledge.
Thank you.
All right, if we could do the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation and God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, strategic plan report, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. It's good to see you all tonight. Even though we're distant and apart, it's still nice to see all of your faces. With that, our strategic plan report tonight is an update on an agreement we reached a few years ago with Synergistic. And here to present, I believe, is Ms. Downs and Dr. King with her as well.
Good evening, everyone. So this is just a progress update for Synergistic. For those of you who are not as familiar, Synergistic is our third-party energy conservation partner. And so they monitor our program within the plant operations department and just really help us optimize the building operations. As a result, we have saved substantial revenue. In the last two years, we have saved approximately $1.6 million, which is awesome, and that was really the goal of the program. And so they are really influential in the department because they're able to have their energy specialists walk the buildings during the evenings and non-peak hours. So we're able to save a lot of energy because they're able to identify things that we would have never known were running at 2:00 a.m. So the program is growing, obviously. We're getting a lot more buy-in as we become more more common in the schools, and so we're definitely going to work on doing a bigger PR push in the next year. But the program is doing very well, so with that, any specific questions or concerns? And then this slide in particular talks about the energy use intensity, which is basically showing you from the onset of the program in November 2017, we've actually saved the energy that we're using per square foot. So we were right around 71. And now in January 2020, we were only using approximately 62 kilowatts per square foot, which is really remarkable. And then the positive trends, the avoided costs. So this is comparison year over year from last August through January to this August through January. Fiscal year 1819 was in blue and green is this past fiscal year. So if you see the difference between the two, for the most part, we were doing very, very well. The only discrepancy is that December, January, where we had like that polar vortex. So sometimes, obviously, there are some environmental factors that will complicate the process. However, year over year, we are doing better. And then last but not least, Synergistic just wanted to say a special thank you. Obviously, they're a great partner, but they are also partnering with those of us inside of the institution. So Mr. Sanders, myself, Rich Ramos, Josh, and the maintenance and operations team, the U46 teachers, staff, and students, and then obviously the energy specialists. Thank you very much.
Okay, do people have any questions? And I didn't see anyone, so there we go. Just go ahead if you do.
So this is Melissa. Regarding all the graphs and the total energy savings, is that, how many buildings are we monitoring? Is it every building?
We are, so we're monitoring every building. Some of it is done manually because not all of our buildings have building automation system updates, however, they are monitoring and walking every building within the district. But a lot of those savings, obviously, come from the bigger schools. So the high schools and the secondaries are really a prime opportunity just because they host a lot of the after-hours events. And that's really our opportunity to make sure that equipment that's not needed isn't running. But yes, it's the district as a whole that contributes to our number.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in a board meeting, I'm on here for something, let me give you a call back. Yep, I'm on a board meeting.
Asha, if you could mute your microphone, please, that would be great.
Mr. Sanders and Madam President, for the record, Ms. Porter joined us at 7:05.
Thank you. And I did hear from Ms. Nolan that she's not able to attend, I'm not sure if she texted you back, Mrs. Kerr, but she did text me and say she's not able to make it this evening.
I got that as well, yes, yeah.
I was on, but I got disconnected beforehand, Miguel.
Correct.
Okay, are there any other questions? How many years is, well, years do we have on this contract?
We still have three years, so we began in 2018, and so we're in our second year, July will start our third year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, um, let's see. Public comments, Mr. Sanders, you didn't have to run this since you're.
And at this point, again, for members of the public, if you do want to make a public comment at this time, please quickly enter your name, address, and topic in the Q and A section at the bottom of your screen, and we will make sure you're called. In the meantime, also, please note, board members, that I'm in the open board room. We did also post this as a location people could come to, and there are no participants in the, in the room with me. So Madam President, seeing no questions, I believe we have no public comments at this time.
Okay, so we can move on to additional information. Mr. Sanders, could you just give us an update on, you and your staff have been doing great work the last few weeks, and I know the board really appreciates it, and our community appreciates it, and we can't thank you enough. Could you just give us a brief update on how things are going?
Oh, sure. So if you don't mind, I'll give a quick overview, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson to speak to the instructional side, and then Dr. King in regards to the operations and how we're taking care of feeding kids and getting Chromebooks out. So first of all, let me give my personal thank you to all of our team members, our administrators, cabinet, and principal, all administrators have really stepped in and done an amazing job. Our teachers are quickly shifting their practice to do distance learning using any number of online methods for our students to engage, to all of our support staff, and multiple community volunteers. It really shows you what a great community we have here in U46, that we really come together in times of crisis. So on March 13th, the governor ordered that all schools would be closed effective March 17th. In his announcement, he created also a, what he called a SWAT team through the Illinois Association of School Administrators to guide his work in, in the field of education, as well as to give additional guidance out to the field. I was lucky enough to be named as one of the administrators selected to serve on that SWAT team, and that has taken quite a bit of my time over the past three weeks, but also very beneficial work, I think, at least at the statewide level. I continue to share that we're not really following Bloom's taxonomy, we're following Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So our first priorities are really making sure that we're filling the bellies of children, making sure that they are full, that they have food available to them, that they're safe. Continuing to tell staff that our top priority is number one for them to keep themselves safe and healthy, to do their best, to expect perfect imperfection, to give ourselves permission to try and fail, to innovate, connect with families, not just students, making sure that we're contacting students who are not in attendance, and then also to be empathetic, and I think they've really, administrators and teachers alike have risen to that challenge. With that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Johnson to talk about our shift to online learning and distance learning.
So thank you for the opportunity tonight to provide an update on our distance learning work. So just to echo some of what Mr. Sanders shared, a tremendous thank you to the just talented and committed, passionate team in U46, and it's not only the instructional team, but truly the integration of the instructional team with our operational team as well. But to, to work with all of these colleagues over the course of the last three weeks has, even though this is probably the, the most significant challenge I hope to ever see in my educational career, they've been nothing short of inspirational. Not once has anyone said no, or maybe, but it's, we'll figure out how to do it, and we'll figure out how to do it as quickly as possible. So it's a, it's a thank you to absolutely everybody that's been involved from administration to support staff, to teachers, to all of our directors and managers, it has been, it's been quite an effort, and I think we've done well, we've done really well as a team, so I'm very proud to be part of the team and to get to share the update on behalf of so many individuals who have put just countless hours and days and weeks into this work. So as Mr. Sanders said, you know, we were very, we worked as quickly as we could to turn around with Phase One of distance learning, which was essentially resources and options for students to be engaging in that distance learning, and that was essentially a little bit later in the week of the 17th, that was up by about the 19th of March, and that continued through spring break, and we had options and activities and resources out for all of our students pre-K through 12 in all of their programs. As that was making its way out and students and families were engaging, we were also then taking on the efforts to move forward with Phase Two of distance learning, which was really to get as much technology into hands of families that didn't already have it, to be able to implement the ongoing curriculum and to continue to move curriculum forward as it is outlined in U46. So again, working with this, this extensive team to make sure that the curriculum could transition in a, in a way that would be positive and beneficial for students online, and also then working to launch a really significant professional development effort as well for teachers, so that we were providing professional development in Canvas and Google Classrooms, the use of Zoom, Cami, Screencastify, there's, there's a number of resources that we've identified within our distance learning plan, and also within our approved resources, those that align to ISB, those within U46, and also aligned to our work around guidelines for our, our, our team. So aligning all of that, we started professional development then on March 27th, and also concluded on March 30th. And we had over 150 online sessions, and we had thousands of participants over the course of those two days. In addition to the tech platforms that teachers had the opportunity to engage in professional development with, they also had the opportunity to participate in PD that went over the transition to online or distance learning, the opportunity to also receive updates on what attendance and grading would look like, updates specific to content areas, programs, or departments as well. And many of those have been recorded, they are available for on-demand learning as well for our, our staff members, and that continues. We also had professional development optional PD again available on April 3rd and April 6th, and our team continues to provide support to our teachers as, as we move forward. With that, then, as mentioned, we also were working through our first round of tech distribution. So our integration with our operations team and our distribution team were able to distribute roughly 5,800 Chromebooks to households K through four who did not already have a student with a Chromebook in that household. So our first goal was to try to get a U46 issued device into every household within U46. That doesn't mean one per student, but every household. So you knew that five through 12, those students should have had a Chromebook. And so we focused on K4, and we continue to follow up with families K4 who were not able to pick up Chromebooks two weeks ago for their students. We are currently working at drafting our plan to provide work on iPad distribution and another round of Chromebook distribution as well to get more technology into the hands of families so that they can continue to access our distance learning. So we continue to look at data and, and provide that data. We will also continue to look at professional development. We have also the Assistant Superintendents of Schools and Instruction have also been working as a team to identify reviewing attendance and reaching out to students and families who are not checking in online, finding out how we can provide additional support for them as well. So that's a, that's a very brief summary over the three weeks of, of work, so thus far for distance learning.
On the operation side, we've served over three, or distributed over 300,000 meals. That's breakfast, lunch, and supper to our students in the areas. Over 100,000 total snacks to the students. Warehouses, Dr. Johnson mentioned, picked up over 6,500 Chromebooks from the schools with the help of the principals who collected them for us, which we greatly appreciate. And as she mentioned, we've distributed almost 6,000 of those 6,500. The remaining have been making appointments to come to the warehouse and pick them up. As of today, they had about 360 appointments, and they've made over 500 phone calls to families who did not pick up the Chromebooks that were scheduled to get them. Also, what they have done is picked up almost 2,700 iPads, which I believe the intention would be K through two. And then we've been also processing orders to try to find more Chromebooks and iPads, so we can make sure, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, to get one in the hand of every student as much as possible. Back on the food deliveries, the volume of food that we're moving every day is almost double what we normally move in a day. We have trucks going to some locations twice a day just to get all the food there based on the volumes we've been distributing. Around the foundation donations, they'll be packaged this week, and they're expected to go to schools next week for distribution. And I get, again, I want to thank all the operation staff for all their help. Enormous number of food service people have been significant in helping us get food to students, the warehousing staff, the IS staff, the volunteers from transportation, and all the work that the custodians have been helping us do, clean out lockers. We've been trying to get, we've checked every locker to make sure food isn't left in them. And a lot of those little things that a lot of us don't think about are very important, so we don't have problems down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King, and I think the iPads, first and foremost, will be going to pre-K families as in our next distribution, and maybe some kindergarten as well, correct, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, the, the focus right now will likely be pre-K, just depending on, on having enough numbers of, of those iPads and the newer, the newer generation iPads as well, so that those will be most applicable for our, our students.
And then we're also still working on how we can try to ensure all families have access, wireless access for our devices as well, because we know that that's another gap that we have, is that there's some families that do not have the bandwidth at home or the resources to provide for internet at home, so we're looking at opportunities for that that we'll provide to our families as well as, as best as we can. And that's just a quick update on where we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, and thank you to everyone, the administrators, the staff, the teachers. This has just been amazing what you've accomplished in the last few weeks, and again, thank you so much. Any other board members have any comments or questions? No, okay, guess we'll move on to the consent agenda. Nope, sorry, for your, for your requests.
We have eight Freedom of Information Act requests that are on the board packet and will be available for the public on our website once we return from the shelter in place.
Now the consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, March 16th, 2020, termination of Camille Littlejohn, noon hour supervisor, termination of Damian Young, a monitor, resignation agreement and general release between Kathy Davis and School District U46, Crisco versus School District U46 Settlement Agreement and General Release, a contract renewal for school safety and culture, culture for Raptor Annual Software Renewal, a contract renewal for Financial Operations and Human Resources for Immuno Software Annual Support and Update Licensing, a bid from Plant Operations for Coleman Elementary School Ventilation System Project Number 682, a bid for McKinley Elementary School Lower Level HVAC Project Number 1202, a bid from Financial Operations for the annual financial audit, a bid from Plant Operations for Bartlett High School's Roof Replacement Project Number 551, a bid from Plant Operations for Harriet Gifford Elementary School Mechanical Systems Replacement Project Number 831, a bid from Transportation Department for Oil and Miscellaneous Fluids, a proposal from Teaching and Learning ELL Department, ELL Dual Language Multicultural Classroom Libraries, proposal from Teaching and Learning and ELL Department for ELL Dual Language Multicultural Diverse Classroom Libraries. There were two different ones on that one. Proposal from Teaching and Learning and ELL Department for Astrilita, Accelerated Beginning Spanish Reading Resource, a change order for Plan, from Plan Operations for Centennial Elementary School HVAC System Replacement Project Number 575, a change order from Plant Operations for Clinton Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project 651, a change order from Plant Operations for Kenyon Woods Middle School Chiller Replacement Project Number 451.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that a board member would like to remove?
I'm in on my phone.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? So move, this is Melissa.
Second, this is Eva.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Jonathan Gifford.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Okay, discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills for April 6, 2020. Mr. Burnage is on the Zoom meeting with us and is available to answer any board questions. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $11,087,022.26.
Could I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of $11,087,022.26?
So move, this is Melissa.
Second, Donna.
Any discussion, oh, sorry, roll, roll call, please?
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam, I'm sorry, Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Sorry, I muted myself there. The next one is under discussion action, was actually on the work session for the last meeting, which was the first and ever, first and only board telephone conference meeting right after we were put on hold in place. It is the Secondary Science Electives Curriculum Proposal, the presenting team members who were not able to join us on the phone or were actually told not to bother joining us on the phone for the last meeting are available tonight if the board would like them to go through the PowerPoint. Otherwise, before the board is the Secondary Science Electives Curriculum Proposal.
Sue, does the board want to see the PowerPoint, have it that presented? If, if so, let me know.
This is Melissa, I think it'd be great to at least go through a quick run-through of it.
Okay, why don't we do that then, sounds great.
This is Deb McMullin, I am your K-12 Science Coordinator. With me is Bridget Trimble and Laura Thorpe. And so we'll do our best to go through this and answer any questions you may have. This is our curriculum writing team, pretty extensive team. We were very careful to include dual language along with special education. We were very careful to include dual language along with special education and included the Dream Academy as well. I want to apologize, you probably hear my granddaughter, she's in her mind, my apologies. Please forward the slide. The purpose of the work that we did was to adopt curriculum frameworks and resources for secondary science electives and to make sure that we were updating them according to the next-generation science standards that include instructional practices for standard-based learning and assessment, and also to update honors and curriculum to feature an expanded scope of competencies while teaching current standards in depth and in greater depth than our regular courses. And then also to update our advanced placement science curriculum as those had been changed as well. And then, of course, to include resources because that hadn't been done in a while. We wanted to make sure that what's happening across the district is the same. Next slide. So, of course, anytime that you do one of these kinds of adoptions, it's all about making sure that we put good resources in the hands of all students and all teachers, and then also to make sure that the learning experiences that are taking place across the district are the same and that they're rigorous. Of course, templates, assessments, and resources are providing a common experience that's very high in rigor and provides opportunity for students to develop science proficiency in both English and Spanish across our district. Our, we focused a lot on our strategic plan. The two parts were student achievement and effective and engaged staff. We wanted to find resources that supported our students and also put into the hands our staff some resources that were not only updated but aligned to the three dimensions, which we'll talk about in a moment. We followed the curriculum writing process with a call to committee. We, of course, mapped using all of the relevant pieces of the next-generation science standards and, sorry, AP. We provided professional development team feedback. We went to their team. We went to curriculum instruction team, instructional cabinet, and then, of course, now we're here. Next slide, please. Whenever you're doing any kind of curriculum writing, you really want to make sure that you are using a compass. And our compass was the College Board for Advanced Placement. We also use that for our AP courses as well as our honors courses. We use next-generation science standards, specifically the three dimensions, and then also use those three dimensions in both honors and our AP coursework as well. We use the backward by design process and also standard-based learning and assessment process. So all of those were resources for us to develop our curriculum. Our learning outcomes, again, were tied to the backward design model. We identified our desired results. We decided what kind of evidence we wanted to select from or wanted to collect from our students, and then we developed our learning plan, and the learning plan part will continue moving forward over the next few years. Next slide, please. Assessment is really important. This is where we're collecting evidence from our students. And so each course will administer three common assessments. The common assessment data will be loaded into Infinite Campus, and then the data will be pulled using Tableau. Next slide. And then that data from Tableau will be put into the hands of our individual teachers, the PLCs, administrators, and then our district science team, our broader district science team, in order to use that data to make decisions. We also collect data from our teachers voluntarily with a voluntary reflection survey. The reflection survey monitor or models the slow so our teachers can use our science assessments as part of their slow process. The idea is to have them collecting real-time data so we can make real-time decisions. The implementation timeline is spring and summer. This year, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to begin professional development cycle for our teachers. In 2021, we'll have full implementation for all secondary science electives, including common assessments. And then in spring and summer, we'll, you know, take a deep breath, look at our curriculum with all of our data points, whether it's the AP test and our common assessment data, and then also our teacher surveys to look and see, make decisions and adjustments as needed. I wanted to, mind to include this progression, just to kind of explain, you know, what our students take. So their freshman year, they could take biology or honors biology in, as part of GenEd or a dual-language program. In 10th grade, they could take chemistry, honors chemistry, integrated physical science. And then in 11th grade, they can take all of those, that list of things that you see there, chemistry, honors chemistry, AP. What's different this coming year is that we will be offering, we'll have resources, hopefully with this adoption, for a dual-language chemistry, a dual-language honors chemistry, and dual-language physics, and dual-language environmental science and earth science, and IPS as well. 12th grade, all the same courses are also, you know, you see all the courses there that are offered as well. We wanted to kind of call out IPS specifically. I'm really proud of the work. I'm proud of the work that all our teams did, but that IPS course is really going to be great. It's going to be a very interesting course, and the rigor in it is going to be much different than what it is now. But we wanted to just make sure that we reiterate that IPS would be a first course. So a student wouldn't take chemistry and then take IPS after that. They would take IPS and then chemistry or honors chemistry. So we just wanted you to understand the placement of that. Professional development will have some mandatory sessions that will be about guiding our teachers through the SBLA process with the new sources, new curriculum and resources, and then also a day of common assessment calibration. And then there'll be some optional PD worked in there for all of our resources that we'd like to adopt that have some kind of online portion and online component to them, to make those for our teachers a little bit better. We would like to adopt some Spanish resources for chemistry and physics, as I mentioned earlier. We adopted biochem and physics curriculum and resources a few years ago, if you may recall. And biology came with a Spanish option, but our chemistry and physics did not. And so we were able to go out and find a resource that we can use for chemistry and physics so that we can now offer those two courses in dual language for our dual-language students. Honors Biology, you can see all of the choices that we have here, including, again, a Spanish book to support our students in dual language. Biozone is a new resource to all of us, but it's strongly related to the NGSS standards and also to phenomenon-based learning. And so our teachers have selected resources in this particular page. Next one, please. Honors Chemistry, I also wanted to highlight that we were able to find a book to support our dual-language students, and so these would be the books that we are requesting for honors chemistry. Next slide, please. Environmental Science, they are looking at a consumable workbook from Biozone again. And again, just a really great resource. It's new to our district, but very heavily three-dimensional and phenomenon-based, so it's going to be a great resources for us. Integrated Physical Science wanted to go with Discovery. Discovery is an online resource. The great thing about Discovery is they do job-embedded PD alongside our teachers, but also it comes in English and Spanish. And with the adoption of integrated physical science, we would actually have access to all science courses through Discovery. And so you'll see that other courses are going to have access to this, and this is where we get the ability to have dual-language courses in environmental science and some of the other courses as well. Earth and Space Science, again, is selecting a resource from Biozone, and then also Discovery Education. There'll be another one of the cohorts that get job-embedded PD. Next slide. AP Biology also is looking at Biozone and then Campa, which is the AP-approved book in order to provide that three-dimensional support to our teachers and students in three-dimensional learning. And next slide. AP Chemistry went with, again, a traditional book from the AP College Board list, a very strong resource for them, comes with an online resource as well, platform as well. Next resource is AP Physics C. AP Physics C and also Integrated Physical Science, you may have noticed in the request, those are the only two that came with, you know, wanting some lab materials. So in those two resources, you'll find a couple of different requests. Brenner probes were wanted for AP Physics C, and then for IPS, there was just a bunch of just hands-on materials that they needed to do their lab work that they're working on. Total cost of the adoption is $1,217,236.49. Next. We need to revise and review our curriculum and our templates, and we'll do this with our district curriculum cycle and our common assessments. All teachers are going to be provided with post-survey to provide us some kind of feedback about how they think the PD is going and also the resources, how we're able to implement them fully. Data collection through our common assessments, I think, is one of the most important things that we do in terms of looking at how we're progressing and implementing our resources and our curriculum. And then the Office of K-12 Science and Plenary will provide all common assessment results to our building administrators and our PLCs, and then also our district science team, which is made up of about 100 teachers, will be utilizing that information along with other information like the Illinois Science Assessment and the College Board reports in order to make sure that we're giving our students the rigorous science education that they deserve. That includes our presentation.
So with that, Madam President, the administration recommends adoption of the secondary science curriculum.
Okay, why don't we do the motion and then we can do questions? Don't mess it up this time. So could I have a motion to adopt the secondary science curriculum?
This is so moved. No.
All right, give Melissa first, and I'll take second. Kate.
Okay, any questions, discussion?
So this is Melissa. I've got one quick question on the IPS course, the Integrated Physical Science course. So I understand that that is considered an introductory course, but you have it listed for 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. So in what instance would somebody be taking that course in either 10th or, I'm sorry, in 11th or 12th grade?
Really great question. Typically, something, a kid would take IPS in their junior, senior year if they didn't pass their sophomore options if they took chemistry or something.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I just, Mr. McMullin, I just wanted to thank you. I know that three weeks ago I had asked a whole bunch of questions. You and your team were very gracious in getting those questions back before our really quick phone meeting. So I just wanted to thank you for those. Those were really helpful, and thanks to you and your team for putting the time to take those questions and get them answered.
Other questions?
I have just. A question, how long does the license for the technology part goes for?
Great question, Ms. Porter. It's six years.
I thought you said that before, it was in a presentation or something before, right?
Yes, we always try to get a six-year license. Typically, they come in six years.
Thank you.
I have a couple of just minor questions. I assume the kids have already signed up for honors physics. So next year, we would just change them to AP Physics 1?
That's a really great question, and thanks for bringing that up. We'll be phasing out honors physics. This year, the phase-out didn't take place partially because we were waiting for this, you know, to move the curriculum board. But the other thing was, the only other option would be AP Physics 1, and we had to make sure that teachers in each of those buildings had the credentials in order to teach that. And so we're kind of in this lag year to make sure that all of our teachers have those credentials. And so it's kind of a weird, wonky year next year.
Okay, so maybe some schools will be ready and others may not be.
Correct.
And then the other question I had, you mentioned that there's going to be three common assessments. Can teachers also give their own assessments if they feel the need?
Oh, yes. We want them to give an assessment for, you know, summative assessment for every one of the standards and/or competencies. You know, we don't, I don't designate how many that should be. That's all around the standard base, the true standard-based understanding of like, how much evidence do I need to collect from a student to see their mastery? And so we leave that up to their art of teaching, and then we just use those three common assessments in order to make sure that across the district, we're seeing the same rigor and we're seeing students, all students, having access to that learning. And then that also gives us ideas of not necessarily, you know, it's not a matter of picking on somebody, it's a matter of then being able to get our teachers together and building a relationship with them so that they can, so I could say, I did not do, my students didn't do as well as yours did, Bridget Trimble, on this environmental science common assessment, how did you do? What did you do? And then, you know, growing our practice together. So I see the common assessments as much about SBLA and the basis of SBLA. And we really help our teachers understand SBLA as well as making sure we have equity across the district and how our students are learning.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
The next item under discussion action is the resolution authorizing the emergency suspension of policies due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I know we've had some feedback that if, Madam President, can I share the feedback that was recommended for an amended motion? So the feedback I heard was for Section 5 to replace the term ratified by the board at a later time to ratified by the board as soon as practicable, and then also a request to add an end date to the resolution, and the recommended end date would be June 30th, 2020, unless it's renewed again before that time. With that, administration would recommend the adoption of resolution authorizing the emergency suspension of policies due to the COVID-19 pandemic as amended.
Would I have a motion to approve? This is the resolution, emergency suspension of policies due to COVID-19 pandemic as amended?
So move, Eva. Second.
Anna? Anna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion, any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, everything's good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
All right, other business, CAC update, I guess CAC is on hold.
I checked the attendees list, and I did not see any names that appeared to be CAC members, but if there are, if they could enter their name in the Q and A, we will call on them to be recognized.
Other business, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under other business is the Agent Obsolescence Plan for Bus Replacement for 2020. Mr. Prowl, Director of Transportation, is on the Zoom conference call to walk the board through that document. Mr. Prowl?
Good evening. It's good to be here with you all. I'm going to start on page three, and I'm going to start with the clarifying comments that I have. I just want to talk about a couple of things. Last year, I recommended to the board that we purchase new school buses, and that was based on some safety features that were newly available last year. Those safety features did not have any positive impact on our operation. And in addition, this year, Midwest Transit, the vendor that we typically buy buses from, that is the low bidder, has over 1,200 used buses that they're trying to get rid of. So the pricing on used buses was significantly better this year. Also, last year, I recommended that the district Also, last year, I recommended that the district purchase two gasoline buses. We did do that. We have been testing them. They are working out well. We have some mile-per-gallon concerns. The market is very quickly changing to gasoline. About over 50% of the buses sold this year will be gasoline. But the engine that was designed for the international bus is, this is just the second year, and nobody has a significant amount of mileage on it. So I'm making the recommendation that we wait another year before we consider purchasing gasoline buses. So my recommendation this year is that we buy 20 used buses that have already been identified. The savings to the district in purchasing 20 used buses would be a half a million dollars. It's a school bus, or it's a school district that we have purchased used school buses from before, and those buses have been, been good. They were well-maintained. So with the recommendation to purchase 20 used buses this school year, the fleet will main, will be maintained current with the agent obsolescence plan that you have. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions.
Sue, I've missed your.
Yeah, I'm moving the cursor between two screens. It's so awkward. Do anyone, does anyone have any questions? Okay. All right, next item.
Our next item is the 2020 pavement condition inventory, and here to present that is Sheila Downs. Sheila, you need to unmute your microphone.
Great idea. Let's start again. All right, so the 2020 pavement condition inventory has, was initially created in 2014, and each year, we simply update it. And so it really is a snapshot of the entire district and the pavement for the parking lots, playground surfaces, and adjoining areas. So the rationale, obviously, is that the natural life cycle, assuming that it was engineered and taken care of appropriately, life cycle for asphalt is between 20 and 30 years. So it's not designed to last forever. So knowing that, we partnered with HLR, which is our civil engineering firm, and they've come up with a plan. They went through, they analyzed each of the pavement inventories, within the inventory, and they've come up with a cycle of replacement. And so this is really just an update for this upcoming year. On the spreadsheet, you'll see the, the schools highlighted in yellow are the ones that we are doing either in part or entirety this upcoming summer. And then there are also budgetary costs that are in red on the spreadsheet. And those numbers reflect the anticipated cost estimate, estimates for the, the ones that are next in the queue. And so realistically, this document has been very beneficial for plan operations. However, it is not the only factor. So even though things are rated on a yearly basis, there's additional atrophy. Obviously, conditions like the polar vortex will cause some areas to deplete or deteriorate a little quicker. However, for the most part, this really helps us when we're creating our future project lists. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions?
So this is Melissa. I guess I'm a little confused at how some of these are prioritized. You know, obviously, the ones that are, that are highlighted, Bartlett High School, Kenyon Woods, et cetera. There's, you know, if we're looking at the scale between 0 and 100, those are some low numbers. But then there's some other schools that are also that have some low numbers, and so how are we going about and prioritizing these?
So there's a lot of factors. One is the budget allowance for the year. Some of them are also congested, congested traffic. There are some drainage issues where we have standing water. And so again, we try to look at the ratings, but we also include any other variables. And for a lot of these locations, there's lots of variables. And so we combine all of that information and then try to go after as many as we can reasonably get done in a year. But there are, we, we haven't been able to do as many as we're doing at a time. And so realistically, I mean, there's always plenty of options to choose from. And so we really try to do our best and go after the ones that are causing the most problems with arrival and dismissal primarily.
Okay, so you're looking at extenuating circumstances on some of these as well, right? So that there's two schools that are, you know, similar in rating. If one has got some extra issues regarding, like you said, standing water or some other extenuating circumstance going on, then you're prioritizing that one to, to get that done.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Sheila, thank you so much for the work on putting that together with, with the firm.
You're welcome.
Work session, Mr. Sanders.
Under work session, our first item is the secondary student wellness curriculum proposal. And as I'm getting that up, I'll introduce Dr. Carpenter and Tracy Jakitis and Dr. Schrod.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I will turn it over to Ms. Jakitis, and she'll walk us through the secondary proposal.
Hey, hello, everybody. Tracy Jakitis, Student Wellness Curriculum Coordinator. I'm here to present the Student Wellness Curriculum Proposals. There's a couple of them in this presentation. The purpose is to share with you the curriculum frameworks, the assessments, the rubrics, and the supporting resources that the following, the team of teachers is recommending for the following courses: Middle School PE, Middle School Health, High School Health, and then modules ENF for Team Sports, Walking for Wellness, Functional Fitness, and Strength and Performance. The rationale behind this proposal is, with student wellness, health education is making a shift that we need to have a greater focus on the development of skills as well as including content. Our proposal is, the goal is to provide students the knowledge and skills that's, that's going to, that will help them support accessing information and making healthy decisions. And within our research and our, our curriculum documents, we took into account the varying interests, the experiences, the values, and the abilities of the students and the U46 community. For the fiscal education proposal, the rationale behind the, the equipment and resources that we're requesting has a lot to do with when we first enrolled, when we first rolled out this new curriculum in 2018, 19, this is the number of students who were participating in a fitness-based physical education course. And as you can see in 2019, 2020, the number of students in fitness-based physical education courses has increased significantly. So when you make that shift from students being in fitness courses versus team sport-type courses, the, the needs for those facilities and that equipment changes. So part of this proposal is going to be to help support and increase the equipment within our fitness centers and our cardio rooms. On the left hand, you will see the current fitness and cardio stations, meaning how many students can be in that facility actively participating in a fitness or a cardio activity. We have a lot of students who really are enjoying our fitness options. It is, I would say, 75% of, of our students are in a fitness-based course. And so we need to try to maximize these facilities so that a student doesn't have to stand and wait for someone to finish before they can access the equipment. So you can see what, what our current stations are, and then what the increase, the number of students who would be able to access a piece of equipment in the proposal. We've aligned this to the strategic plan, increasing student achievement and increasing student engagement, and effective and engaged staff. This common curriculum across the district has really increased teacher collaboration, common assessments, common professional development. We were fortunate to have representation from all of our sites on the curriculum writing teams. The process and the resources we use to help write this curriculum came from the Illinois Physical Education and Health Standards. The National Health Education Standards were a big part of our resource. They're very skills-based. The mandated Illinois School Code content, we made sure was included in our health education curriculum. And we also referenced the certification programs for ACE personal training, ACE group fitness instructor, and ASAP coaching, and IHSA officiating when writing the fitness and the team sport courses. So the process began for, for each course. It's a little bit different. Health, we started in 2017. And these, all of these courses, the curriculum writing, we finished up in December of 2019. We took the, we took it through the Curriculum Process Instructional Council, Instructional Cabinet, Professional Development Committee, now to the Board of Education. The recommendation that we are, we are requesting the recommendation for fiscal education as a year-long course in 7th grade, so we're switching to semester courses. And so we had to adjust our 7th and 8th grade curriculum. We will do fiscal education as a one-semester course in 8th grade. Our health education will go from quarters to a full semester course in 8th grade. We will have health education recommendation 10th grade in high school. And then students in grades 10 through 12 will have access to modules E and modules F for Team Sports, Functional Fitness, Walking for Wellness, and Strength and Performance. The, oh, sorry. Dance, Team Sports, Freshman PE, Sophomore PE, Personal Fitness, Conditioning, and Weight Training. These courses will all be dropped because our new courses will replace that content. Or as in the case of Dance, the school code language indicates that Dance cannot, Dance is a fine arts course, and you cannot get a PE credit for a Dance class. So the wellness course objectives for health education are very focused. These are the National Health Education's skill focus. So critical thinking, analyzing student influences, helping students become health literate, increasing their ability to communicate, increasing their ability to use information to make decisions, and then communicate those decisions, as well as advocacy in their personal lives, family, and community. For fiscal education, course objectives are also critical thinking when, when it becomes, you know, based on students' fitness and wellness, physical literacy. We have found that when students are in courses that they enjoy, they engage more, and it increases their ability to move with competence and confidence, which increases a healthy development in lifestyle. And then we are also bringing into the career exploration with the group fitness instructor, the personal trainer, instructor, officiating, and coaching certifications. This slide, this is just one, one of our high school teachers took a survey in one of her Walking for Wellness classes at the beginning of the year. And what she had asked them was, do I think that, do I recognize there's a benefit to physical activity in my life? And you can see on the top that when they first started this class, they were not quite sure about that. And then they were asked the same question at the end of the semester after spending one semester in Walking for Wellness, which was brand-new this year. And you can see that every single student in that class, because they are in a course that they chose, and it's a course, an activity that they enjoy, every one of them said they actually, they absolutely can see that physical activity is benefiting their life because they enjoyed being in that, in that physical activity. The implementation for these courses. So what we, what we will do, most of my team was really hoping and wanting to have teacher collaboration prior to the implementation. NewZella is one of our resources that is going to meet with our high school health teachers to talk about what is the specific content in health education so they can align some of the articles within the NewZella resource that would specifically align to the health content. So in the summer of 2020, teachers wanted to get together to, to begin this collaboration in planning. In August of 2020, was when we would distribute the curriculum documents, talk about Infinite Campus, do the Goodheart Wilcox, which is the health teacher resource. We are going to also be adding inclusion in physical education training for all PE teachers. And then how to support the development of fitness when you are not in a fitness center, professional development around that, sport education, technology training, how to use technology in PE, which I will tell you, they're getting very good at how to use technology in PE right now. The professional development, so this is just the cost of each professional development session, the summer sessions, middle school inclusion training, high school curriculum implementation, the high school teacher resource, which is Goodheart Wilcox, technology training, NewZella resource training, the cost of professional development. The resource costs, so Goodheart Wilcox is the text that the health teachers have chosen as a teacher resource. It's, it's, the student edition comes in English and Spanish, but the teachers didn't choose it as much for the student access as it was for teacher access. It's, it's just a content, it's a place for teachers to get content, research-based, and then resources, assessments, to be able to share with students. The goal for this resource is not to have every student have a textbook and read. That's not what we want to do in health education. Technology support, there's a set-up fee for setting up the technology within our system. The NewZella, that's really where we'd like to go is, is with this current articles in resource that the district already, we currently have a NewZella license. What we will be adding to the NewZella platform is the SEL. It's, it's a folder in, in NewZella, specific to social-emotional learning. Health is very much socially-emotional learning. And so within this folder will be the alignment to the content in our health curriculum as well as the, the other SEL articles that are already in their SEL resource. And then Human Connect sells, it's called Lesson Plan for Skills-Based Health Education. It's a teacher, it's a teacher resource that helps teachers change the way they teach. Instead of a teacher, a health teacher imparting, here's everything you need to know about a topic, they create skills-based lessons for students to help with the inquiry and discovery of the content and then adding it into a skill. The resources for physical education, we would like to make our fitness centers, we're trying, most of this is just an update to our fitness center facility. We would like to replace the kind of old, older wall-mounted TVs in some of the places with more of a flat-screen look, this monitor, so teachers can project PowerPoints or information from their iPads to students or videos or whatever kind of information they want to share with students in more of a wall-mounted look. They would also like, found the box is a, is a fitness equipment that it's fitness you can do outside of a fitness center. And then the update to the different fitness centers is the largest cost of this proposal for fitness center strength and cardio equipment. And then we would do a Spark is a resource, then they have a textbook on how to increase inclusion in physical education as a resource for teachers. So the proposal, the total cost, the professional development is $26,345. The health education proposal resources is $116,424.48. The physical education resources and fitness equipment is $299,778.27. So the total cost for the, it would be a $712. Physical education and health proposals is $442,547.75, which is $56.5 per student. Our next steps would be to provide, like, as I, as I had mentioned, physical education and health teacher collaboration for lesson planning, Infinite Campus technology integration support for assessment and grading, as well as, we, we come back next year, and the teachers will review and revise what we have put in place and make the adjustments to the rubrics, curriculum, and the assessments. And then we are, we are right now in the process of continuing to develop modules G and H for students to continue on the following year. And we are also in the process of working with the University of Illinois to help us develop a group fitness and personal trainer certification course. And that is the student wellness proposal.
Tracy, did you want to go through the PowerPoint on professional development as well? Or did board members, or did board members want to see the professional development PowerPoint as well?
No, that's just, I, so when we, when we present to the professional development committee, they don't need this whole big presentation that we bring, give to you. I just pull pieces. I just pulled pieces out of it that are relevant to the PD committee. So that, sorry, that's just a separate.
Okay, just additional resource for the board to consider. Thank you. Sue, I think you're still muted. Do you want me to just ask if do board members have questions that they have of the team?
This is Melissa. I have just one quick question. On the New Zella, when we expand our license to include the the SEL articles, does that mean that all teachers across the district then also have access to that additional content?
So it will be, it's, it'll be a 912 resource. So all, because it's, it's for the secondary health, the high school health teachers. So all 912 teachers will have access to the SEL folder.
Okay, thank you.
I got unmuted, sorry. Other questions? I had a couple. One is we're replacing team sports with coaching and officiating. How will that be different from team sports? I mean, will you have the team sports, but then have kids doing the coaching and the officiating as well?
So we, we have, it's called team sports, coaching, and officiating. And so historically, it was just team sports and they just, it's team sports. And so in this new, our new course, it's kind of a three, a three people kind of component. So you have the player, you have the official, and you have the coach. And so our students are going to rotate through these positions. So you're not just always playing the game. You might be the official one day, you might be the coach one day, and you might be the player. So they still get participate because they love the team sport piece. But the officiating and the coaching is that career piece and that certification part that we can bring in. Give them, you know, some type of certification or some type of other type of job that they could possibly district.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, I know in the past, we've often had difficulties with kids not wanting to get dressed for gym and just not liking gym. Have we noticed, for example, with walking for wellness, that there's less, that there's more participation?
So walking for wellness is a course that doesn't require students to change. It's a, we, we look at it like it's a, it's realist, it's, it's life. Like people put on tennis shoes and during their lunch hour, they might walk around the block. And so that's kind of what this course is. They're not running, they're not, it's not a, it's not a high intensive heartbeat course. So the students actually are not required to dress. They are just required to show up and within one or two minutes of the bell, they are outside, they're walking, they're getting 35, 40 minutes of cardio activity every day. Most of, most of our walking for all students are walking between two and three miles every day in PE.
Great, thank you.
So we don't have a dressing problem in walking for.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, our next work session item then is the renewal of School District U46 High School Membership in the Illinois High School Association, IHSA, for 2020, 2021. Ms. Mustorovic is available to unmute and answer any board questions. This is an annual resolution, not resolution, but an annual event the board undertakes to allow us to be members of IHSA at no cost.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Great. Our next work session items are contracts over $25,000 for each of the following presentations. Mr. Phelps has joined on the Zoom meeting to answer any board questions as well as the relevant presenters. The first is a contract renewal for, from the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools Instruction and Equity for Hero Behavior Tracking Annual Renewal. Ms. Mustorovic is here, and did you want to walk through the, the data presentation that was provided to the board as well? Before, as part of this presentation?
I wasn't, I wasn't planning on doing that, but I could.
It's, it's up to you. Does the board want to see the data or did your, do you have a chance to look at the data as part of the proposal? And so I'll just do my usual spiel and say, administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Hero by school mint in the amount of $68,292.53 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Do people have any questions about the document with the data or any other questions?
Is there just, this is Melissa, is there just a quick summary of? I mean, I, you know, I look at these at the different sheets, but is there just a quick summary, like district wide, the, the amount of, of say tardies that we've, you know, been able to decrease because of using this?
Well, it's, it's different by school. Some schools have had more success in decreasing tardies than others. And it's largely, the, the reason why is largely based on the system, the, the systems they've been able to implement to reduce tardies. So having, you know, following all of our PBIS expectations where there are clear school-wide expectations of students and those expectations are taught to students and consistently implemented. Overall, I'd say the tardy data particularly this year was skewed heavily because there was a, an increase in tardies at one of our sites. But overall, it's, it's been pretty flat across the board. The system has, has allowed us to track it a little bit more. With a little bit more detail, but also allow us to provide positive points to students for meeting behavior expectations.
So is the benefit of this more so in the, us being able to track it and to be able to see where we're having issues?
The benefit in, for Hero is, is more so in the ability to track and recognize students for exhibiting positive behaviors. It's, it's good for tracking tardies. It allows us to track tardies over time. It allows us to understand the difference between tardy to school and tardy to class. But the, the real benefit of Hero is also our, its ability to allow us to track positive behaviors. So when students do exhibit, you know, one of the behavior expectations or our core values of, of the school, we could, we could then award them points and provide those, those incentives and recognize kids for doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our next item in is a contract renewal for educational support programs and alignment, advanced advancement via individual determination. Joining Mr. Phelps for this part is Dr. Johnson, Deputy Superintendent for Instruction. Administration recommends the approval of the contract renewal with Avid Center in the amount of $62,057 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Thank you for including the information on the enrollment. That's, that's useful.
You're welcome. But next, then we have a contract renewal for Educational Pathways, Project Lead the Way, Participation Fee. Joining Mr. Phelps for this portion is Ms. Brown, Director of Educational Pathways, and Ms. McMillan, Coordinator of K-12 Science and Planetarium, and Ms. Stewart, Coordinator of CTE. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Project Lead the Way in the amount of $34,600 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Right, our next are work session items that are bids and proposals. The first is a proposal from Business Services for Driver's Education Car Replacement. Mr. Phelps is of course here, along with Mr. Winter, Senior Buyer. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Bigger Chevrolet for two electric cars in the amount of $73,312.56 and NLX North America, Inc., or two permanent charger, car chargers in the amount of $3,168.42 for a total of $76,480.98 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for this current fiscal year.
Any questions? And part of this is being paid for with a grant from Commonwealth Edison? Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct.
Is that unusual? I mean, have we had a grant from them before? Or is this an incentive on their part?
This is an incentive on their part. What they're going to do is we're going to partner with them. Once we up, hook up the permanent chargers, they will, they will collect the data from that. We will work with them in collecting the data of how the cars are used and the performance of the cars to base it against what a gasoline engine, engine would do, which also helps us also to collect that data. We'll work with them over the, over the timeframe of being used the cars to see what it is, as if it's in our best interest to move forward, more electric cars or just keep gas, whichever more is more cost effective.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, moving on, we have a proposal from Business Services for forms and workflow software. Mr. Phelps will remain and Mr. Villaros, Assistant Buyer and Document Control Specialist are here to present this one. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Clever for two years in the amount of $99,300 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for this fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Okay, next, change orders.
All right, under change orders, we have several of them. Change order, actually, we only have one of them. There's a change order from Plant Operations for Eastview Middle School Cooler and Freezer Demolition. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the change order with Anger Vabre, Inc., in the amount of minus $200.
Are there any questions? Okay, since that is the last item, could I have motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Miguel? You need to unmute.
Sorry, so who motioned first?
Motioned it Kate.
Okay, Ms. Thomas? And second?
Melissa.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, right?
Roll call, yes.
Ms. Thomas? Hi, Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you all. Stay healthy, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sal.